Okay. We will call the school board meeting of St. Lucie County, our special workshop session to order, and welcome everyone that's with us today and give the reminder out, I don't see any without, but I'll never get, okay. Remind everyone that we do require masks be worn within this building. And if you would please join me for the pledge of allegiance as we stand.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic where it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, and every being and justice for all.
Thank you, you may be seated. Mr. Superintendent, I will turn it over to you at this point for all of our items for discussion.
Thank you and good morning to everyone. We've got a few items this morning for the workshop. We're going to start out with just a brief overview of our attempt where we bring in the HBCU, the colleges that come in, and Dr. Perry and myself, and I think Kim Cooper, will make a little brief presentation on that. We're then going to have Dr. Prince, who's going to talk about points of pride, particularly in academics, showing some of the equity, some of the things that we're doing. That'll be followed up by Dr. Wild, who will talk about our spring education plan and our Gears funding for some special tutoring that will happen. And then I want to give a very brief update on the referendum and where we are this year with that as we get ready to meet with the committee. So, go ahead, we got a, who's driving?
Do you want to go straight to the interview?
Yeah. Dr. Perry, go ahead.
Madam Chair, School Board Members, Superintendent Jen, Kim and I have been honored to work on this program for the last four years together, even though this is the fifth year. And we are bringing together students on Thursday virtually for the first time. So, we're hoping that it all works out because in the past, students have gotten up to $7 million worth of scholarships from this one fair when recruiters come into the school. So, we're asking to do follow-up. They'll be able to load their transcripts and do individual follow-ups with the recruiter so that they can continue to get scholarships from those different schools. So, this is, when students go on the website, they will see this flyer on Thursday morning, and it will bring them to the next piece, which is their registration piece.
Okay, on the registration piece, it was kind of like magic to me, but Samantha Davis over here from IT, she made that all happen. We just told her what it should look like and it appeared. It's very user-friendly, we've sent it out to counselors, we have a lot of students already registered, and actually, we have the most numbers of schools registered ever. So, between Dr. Perry, Samantha Davis, and myself, this is what we've come up with. And we thought that it would be beneficial to you all, to one of our recruiters, we've worked with, I've worked with him every year since I've done it. He's Les Ferrier from FAMU, great supporter of St. Lucie County, great supporter of St. Lucie County, and just a super guy. Anyway, so we're going to hear from him and move forward.
Just like in years past, each school has their individual time where they'll come to the fair. So, think about it, when you came to the fair and recruiters were there and kids went from table to table, they'll have an opportunity to come to the fair and go from room to room based on their school times that you can see here on the screen. And once they get to the screen, you'll see FAMU, we let them put them up top instead of Bethune-Cookman, the pride of my heart, just for today. As a matter of fact, the young man that you're going to see used to be the recruiter at Bethune-Cookman, so you know who trained him, trained him well. But students can either click on the info button or on the title of the school, and it'll take them to the website. There, we're all familiar with Zoom, go into the Zoom room, launch the meeting, and I think I just messed up, right? There we go. And you see me come up? And this is Les Ferrier, who's the lead recruiter at Florida A&amp;M University and a good friend of ours. Mr. Ferrier, welcome to our school board meeting.
Dr. Perry, good morning and thank you for having me, sir. I hope you guys are safe and healthy.
We are. We're with our school board members for their monthly workshop and the superintendent, and we're just giving them a quick preview of what's going to happen on Thursday with our students.
That's beautiful. Superintendent, good morning, sir. Board members, good morning. I hope you can hear me. My name's Les Ferrier. I serve as Assistant Vice President for Enrollment Management. I've known Dr. Perry for quite a while now, I've got to know this Cooper, they've done a wonderful job in organizing the college fairs. We are particularly pleased to participate because we've participated for the past five years, and it's a great pipeline, it's a great mechanism for us to have visibility in the St. Lucie County area. Of course, you know that we get a lot of students from your area, and you also know that we have a lot of alum in the area. You know, that's how important that is to a college or university. And the students that we meet, we will engage them in a heartfelt manner, we will look out for their education, their future, and we will encourage them to follow up with us. That includes the underclass members as well as the seniors. So, keep doing, you guys keep doing your great work and please keep inviting us.
Thank you, Mr. Ferrier. Superintendent Jen, board members, any questions for Mr. Ferrier? Thank you, Mr. Ferrier. We will see you on Thursday morning at nine o'clock. We appreciate you joining us this morning. Have a good one.
Absolutely. Can I, can I go ahead and end this meeting? You guys aren't going to use this link for any reason?
Yes, sir, you can.
Okay, have a great day, everyone, and thanks again for the invite.
Thank you. As you know, we have many alumni that are graduates of HBCUs. Dr. Mills would tell you that her daughter Shanique is an HBCU grad from Howard University as well. Our new Vice President Kamala Harris is also an HBCU grad. So, it's a wonderful thing to give these students an opportunity. We have four HBCUs right here in the state of Florida with Edward Waters College in Jacksonville, Florida Memorial down in Miami, Florida A&amp;M in Tallahassee, and of course, the great Bethune-Cookman University in Daytona Beach, the world's most famous beach. Thank you, Mr. Superintendent.
Thank you, Mr. Perry. Go ahead.
Mr. Perry, do you know, or Dr. Perry, do you know how much money will be given that day?
Let me go, we have a slide anticipating your question, the next slide here. This is, this is what's happened the last four years, and then this, this really amounts to the offers that the students receive. So, last year it was over 7.4 million, about 400, over 400 students attended when we started this. So, this will be our fifth or sixth year.
Sixth year.
This is our sixth year, yeah, because when I first came to the district, this was important to me because this was something that I'd seen successful in another district. And this gives our children, this is about equity, this gives our children, our students, they don't want to be called children, they're high school, but it gives them access. Because in the past, only those that may have the means to get on a bus or to take the family, take the trip to the college itself, were able to see it. This way, we're able to bring the colleges here, we're able to bring a lot of the alumni. This year, we won't be able to do it, you know, for the various reasons. You know, and the students come in there, and we're always complimented how our students just shine and how they look, and they're prepared, their counselors work very hard with them to make sure they've got all their credentials ready so that, you know, they're offered on-the-spot scholarships. So, that's, so it's gone up each year. It'll be interesting to see what happens this year in the virtual world. But I didn't want this program to go away, and it felt like, and I want to just commend, Dr. Perry, I want to commend Kim Cooper and Samantha, Samantha Davis is in the back. Samantha, don't wave, don't, Samantha's just, Samantha does not want spotlight, so I don't, I want her here all day today, I don't want her to get nervous. It's a great thing that she did, and I love the word magic, that here's what we needed and boom, she was able to put that up on the screen. So, it's a, it's a team effort with everyone, but our students definitely benefit, and it's a great program.
In addition, Mr. Jen, we started with 16 colleges and universities the first year. The last couple of years, it's been 2021, and this year, we're up to 26, about five first timers.
So, it could be, you know, it could be a positive thing, you know, maybe this is the route to go in the future. We'll, you know, we'll just play it by ear and see what happens because you have more access. Okay.
I think it's important that, number one, we track to see how much money, that was, that was my real concern, is how much money are these kids going to get this year? Because if it ends up being two to three million dollars, you know, hopefully, maybe, and I know this, this sounds a little dangerous, but bring them back in person because these kids really need to be able to sit down and look a guy in the eye and say, hey, this is where I want to go, rather than on a screen. That's my personal opinion, and it's a major, it's a major decision for these children to go off, and to be able to talk to someone and shake someone's hand is very important. Can't do it in COVID times, but if we don't hit a certain dollar amount, you know, these kids really need this opportunity.
This is a very, very different, very different year, and we will be doing our best to track as much as possible. I agree with you, when kids have an opportunity to touch with someone, it's easier for them to have those transcripts right then, and some of those universities do give scholarships right on the line, but we will do a follow-up to try to at least meet this mark.
Five million dollars, I'd be grateful.
But before I make the question, I'm glad you made it clear not during COVID time, but I do agree that once COVID is over, that we definitely would love, because I've actually been to a few of the years and have seen the children interact, and not just the children, but the community and the sororities and the fraternities that interact with the kids, it's just a great atmosphere. Thank you so much for continuing the journey of the HBCUs coming to St. Lucie County for our students. I do have a question. Can students still register? I have a couple of seniors at my after-school program.
Yes, ma'am, they just need to see their counselors.
Okay, and they do it through their counselors?
Yes, ma'am.
Can any students just come on, or do they have to register first through the counselor?
They need to register first through the counselors because the counselor will then process and give them the link so that they'll be able to enter at their specific time for their schools.
Okay, okay. And then you mentioned something about they go into the different rooms of the colleges. Is it like, what is it like, a certain amount of time that they're in that room, then they can go to another room?
We set it up, Dr. Mills, so that they will be able to move around the rooms just like they would be moving around the fair. So, I may come to Mr. Jen's table and stay with him for 15 minutes, and go to Ms. Holly's table and stay with her for 20 minutes based on the schools that I want to see, and they navigate just by clicking on the info button or the school's name to leave from room to room.
Okay, so they leave as they please?
Yes, ma'am, during the time that's allotted for their school.
What time does it start Thursday?
Nine o'clock.
Thank you, Dr. Perry.
Yes, ma'am.
Wanted to offer so much money to, to, let's say, Ms. Holly. How does she single out Ms. Holly in a private, does she send her a private Zoom and say, hey, Ms. Holly, we want to offer you, you know, 10 grand or?
I'm a little bit about the money, too. I get it, as a kid who didn't have any money, first one going to college, without the money, I don't know how you're going to go. So, I spoke to the recruiter specifically about this, and how are you going to follow-up? You know, I need a candid conversation here. Where you're saving a lot of money on your travel, which has been an issue in the past, some schools just don't have the budget to come to the college fair. Well, they are, we have the kids tracked through email, they have the kids tracked through email. And so, their response to me was, we want them, we follow up with them individually after the fact. Because I'm picturing what you're picturing, Dr. Mills, how is that going to work? How are we going to get any money for our kids that need it? And going in and out of the rooms to help the recruiters, we suggested to them, we didn't mandate, but we suggested to them, you know, let's just kind of run in 15-minute intervals. So, as a kid comes in, you want to hit your most salient points at the beginning, you can do that in 15-minute shots. Does that kind of make sense?
Yep. But we'll, we'll, we'll work on it, that's, that's the whole piece. And there's no substitute for, just like there's no substitute for in-person learning, a teacher in front of a student, that's, that's the same true here. So, we'll get through this year, we'll, we'll work out some of the unique challenges like we always do, and then hopefully, if they're all here next year, that means everything's better in the, in the world. But it's, it was, it was really an attempt to not lose this and to help kids that are going to need that. So, we'll follow up, we'll, you know, there'll be some unique challenges with the online, but we've got the great staff here to be able to, to, to get that. There's declining enrollments in many of the, in many of the schools. There's an article I was just reading this week, and so, you know, they want students, they want, they want, they want the students in their school centers. And so, when they see a good one, and they know they're also competing with other schools. So, I don't, you know, I wouldn't think there would be an issue there, but we'll follow-up with that and get information. Anything else? Yes.
If you could clarify something for me, 2018, 428 attendance, 2,300,003. 2020, 407, 7,400,004 doesn't correlate. Is, is that scholarship money going back and paying for other scholarships, or is it just the cost has, has been inflated, or I don't understand?
It's just what's offered that year. It's what's offered that year. There may be more schools, they may have more money to offer at a particular institution. So, it's really what they would offer that year. So, I don't think you can make any kind of, looking at the data there, make, you know, because what jumped out at me was 2018. So, these are the offers, these are the offers that they put out to the students.
So, 2018, I get 428 for 2.3, and I get attendance in 2020, and 2020 is 407, and it's 7.4. It's, it's just the cost of doing business, or it's a lot more money for a little bit less students.
Dr. Wild?
Different colleges come each year, and depending on the budget that they've been allocated that year determines how much they can offer. So, if a, if a college who offers a lot in any given year doesn't come the following year, we're going to see a drop. So, it fluctuates, not based on the cost of doing business, but the number of students attending, it fluctuates more on the situation at each individual college in any given year.
Just cost, cost-related.
That's a great answer. I, I like mine better. When students take more rigorous classes and they're challenged more, recruiters will see that in their transcripts, and they'll get more money. So, if they do more dual enrollment, they take CE classes, they take, you know, they do Johnson &amp; Johnson culinary arts and stuff like that, Helen's like, no, no.
That's true, but that didn't fluctuate between those, those years?
No.
It really was a function of which colleges came.
Okay. Helen's is better than.
They talk to us each year about what their budget looks like, and some years, they're just not free to offer as much based on the budget at their individual university or college. We usually find out during, during the actual fair.
Okay, that'd be nice to know.
More colleges have been coming as well.
Yes, last year it was 21, I think, and this year, we're up to 26. But I will tell you, as Dr. Wild said, sometimes they will offer right on the spot, sometimes they don't, so students have to do the follow-up as well because they're competing with people from everywhere.
I'm good, thank you.
All right, thank you, guys. Madam Chair, I may, we'll go on to our next presentation. What we want to do is really get into some of the academic points of pride we want to show. We've talked about our graduation rate at the board meeting two weeks ago. We kind of want to go a little bit further in the weeds today to show over the last five, six years, the points that, what, what the success rates have been in our school district, our attempts. I'm going to show you, for some of you, this will be a reminder, for our new board members, this will be, will be new information. Dr. Prince, go ahead for the next slide. And then, this all falls under the four guiding pillars of the school district, teaching and learning, safe and caring schools, talent development, and community involvement. And all of these, all of these pillars kind of morph into, to the academic piece, which is why we're all here. Next slide. This kind of shows over the, the rank for the last few years, you can see where we were back in '04 and '05 in the bottom quartile one, and then how we've, I always say, if this was your stocks, this would be a good portfolio to have. And so, we, so as long as we're in the top quarter of the state, based upon, it's, it's a great number, and it's a great story to tell. The next slide really is, shows us our district at a glance right now. You have the handout in front of you, but you can see that we're about 33%, Hispanic, approximately 32% Black, and 29% White, and then you can see the other, the other ones that are there. Free and reduced lunch, we're about approximately 67% of our students are three, at free and reduced lunch. You can see the number of staff members, the number of students, you see the buses that are running, transportation, the miles per year, just, just as a snapshot of, of where we are as a school district. One of the things that the district can be very proud of is when we look at, we make no excuses, we've had one of the highest free, we're the highest free, of our free and reduced lunch on the Treasure Coast, and it creates unique opportunities and unique challenges for our students, but it's no reason why students can't perform at higher levels, and we've been able to demonstrate that over the last few years, and we will continue to do that. I'm now going to turn it over to Dr. Prince, and he'll get into the weeds a little bit on how we got here and some of the programs that we have. He'll, when he completes his, it'll morph over into Helen's, but he'll stop there and answer questions from the board, and then Dr. Wild will come up and talk more about the, the special programs that we're going to be adding for the springtime through appropriate funding, one of which we just got approved yesterday on. Dr. Prince?
Okay, just for the record, Mr. Ingersoll, I liked your, your response better to, yeah, yes. Yeah, I, I thought you threw a softball up there that she could have hit it out of the park, but, but we'll, so, that's kind of what I wanted to talk about. Back in 2015, the superintendent arrived in July, I arrived at the same time. Over the past, we've kind of given board piecemeal updates, you know, how are we doing in real time? But we thought this might be an appropriate time to look at over the last five years to see kind of where we've been and then where we've gone. You can't look forward until you look back first. So, the superintendent kind of shared with you a slide where, out of 67 districts over, you know, 14, or 18 years where districts have been graded, we've earned the same number of Cs as we have earned Bs. We've never earned an A-rated district, we've never been named that before, and I just wanted to share with you some of the optics and measures that we have and where we've been. So, how did we get to where we are now? First of all, it's really about laying a foundation. When we arrived, and I'm not going to read that for you, but I'm just going to, I'm just going to point out some things that, that we saw that were very important. Number one is, we had to take action on students and schools in real time. In other words, we had to pivot very, very quickly. Both Mr. Jen and I came from large school districts, Orange County, Palm Beach County, that it took forever to get things done, and the superintendent made it very clear that we had some real struggling schools and students, and we had to be able to pivot immediately. So, we started having weekly meetings where we looked at individual students and individual schools, and we provided support as needed. The other thing is, we started looking at what Mr. Ingersoll talked about, is we've got a lot of great numbers with regards to creating equity and access for our students, really pushing our students and challenging them by pushing them in advanced and upper-level courses, particularly in middle school, laying a foundation in middle school that carries you into high school. So, we started scheduling audits, and I'm going to get to that in just a minute. Monitoring high return on investment metrics, that's where I always say Butch and Sundance, that's like Mr. O'Leary and I, working with IT to create a dashboard, I'm going to share that with you in just a moment. But the four things that I'm really, are going to say that had the biggest return on investment, is creating a culture of equity and access in all of our areas. We are going to promote and push our kids, and we're going to have them reach for the ceiling and reach for the sky, and we're going to challenge them in our classroom. The second thing is creation of our leadership dashboard. I'm going to show you a snapshot of that. I shared this back about three and a half years ago when we first started the work, but I wanted to share it with our new board to see what we do and on a daily basis in our schools. We implemented surveys for all of our stakeholders and really creating, one of the pillars that Mr. Jen talks about is a customer service. And not only our parents are customers, but here at the district office, our principals are our customers, our students are our customers, and creating a strong customer service culture for all of our stakeholders. Lastly, to me, and I know Dr. Wild would agree, is the implementation of unit assessments. Our kids take a lot of tests at the end of the year, okay? And what we did is, we created a partnership with the union, we brought the union in, and we created many assessments for our students where we could see where our students were in real time to make sure that the standards were being taught and taught effectively by our teachers. And that was a great collaboration, and that's happening in all of our schools every couple of weeks. So, the first thing I want to talk about is our leadership dashboard, and this is really a foundational dashboard that promotes equity and access. And when a principal goes to work every day, along with their email, this is going to pop up on their screen, and it has a lot of different metrics we, we look at. We literally just added COVID metric because we have to do student contact tracing, but graduation, grades, equity, attendance, all of those things we look at on a daily basis to see how our students are performing. Now, the first thing is, we created scheduling audits. Now, I want you to look at these pictures of these students. These are all students that have graduated from our public schools. These pictures were taken about four years ago, and the question is, all of these students are reading above grade level. And there's five levels on the FSA, 1, 2, 3, 4, and 5. 5 is the highest, that means these students are more than one year ahead of their peers. 4 means they're a year ahead. All of these students should be taking upper-level courses. All of these students, mainly of color, should be in AP classes, in Cambridge classes, in dual enrollment courses, or also in career and technical education. When we looked at their schedules, when we looked at their schedules, and I met with the principals, none of these students were scheduled in upper-level courses. Now, just to tell you how it normally works in a school district, is students complete their own course request sheet, right? As a high school kid, you probably did, you said, these are the classes I want to take. Well, sometimes there's nobody advocating for these kids, there's nobody telling these kids, you can do this, you need to take a chance, okay, because this is going to open doors for you in the future. Why not earn college-level credits now? My son is a senior in high school, and he's taking four college credit classes, he's going to graduate with an A degree. Now, financially, that's a great thing for me, okay? But, when, the, the minute he walked into Treasure Coast High School, somebody met with him and they scheduled him into upper-level courses. It's providing equity and access for our kids. Now, how do we monitor this? We have a dashboard, and this is particularly our equity dashboard, and I know you can't see that real well, but I can take a look at my Black students in high school, and I can make sure that if my kids are levels 3, 4, or 5, that they're enrolled in all of these upper-level math classes. And these things we do relentlessly with progress monitoring. Every summer, we have a scheduling audit, and we make sure that our children are being challenged in all of their classes because we have to set the bar high. This shows you what setting the bar high, the bar high looks like. This is our middle school enrollment, and you can see, from 2015 to 2020, we basically doubled the number of students taking middle school algebra in our middle schools. Now, in a Manila folder for our board members, I've included the equity presentation that I did in October. Our newest board members have not seen that, but it shows you our, the gap that we had in upper-level courses for our Black and Hispanic students and how we have closed that gap, okay? But it all starts foundationally in middle school, and it happens by giving middle school students challenging coursework, and that opens pathways for them in high school to take college-level classes. Now, I just wanted to show you, this is the eighth-grade cohort where we had our big jump from 16 to 17, and this is high school students in college classes. And you can see, from 2015 to 2020, we've enrolled more than 2,000 students in upper-level courses, and that cohort of students is now in 11th grade. And if I were to come back to you in three or four years and show you this again, you're going to see these numbers continue to rise because we're creating a culture, okay, that starts early, of challenging kids, and now we're seeing the fruit that, that has been created through creating those foundations. Now, acceleration, I know this looks a little busy, but this is our dashboard where I can tell you, at a high school, and this is Port St. Lucie High School, and this is my current seniors, right now, 97% of our seniors at Port St. Lucie High School are enrolled in a college or career pathway class. We don't have senioritis in St. Lucie County public schools. And you can see that from our CTE enrollment. From 2015 to 2021, we've gone from about From 2015 to 2021, we've gone from about 7,000 students enrolled in career and technical education to 13,518, almost tripling the number of students, or sorry, doubling the number of students with opportunities for workforce development, and when they enter the workforce directly from high school, they have an industry certification, a test that they've passed, where they can enter the workforce immediately if they're choosing not to go to college. I showed you this slide a few months ago on our equity when we talked about that. As a district, I just shared with you that Port St. Lucie High School was at ninety-seven percent of the students that were seniors were enrolled in an AP, International Baccalaureate, Cambridge Dual Enrollment, or CTE course. As a district, we're at ninety-three percent. Somebody's going to ask the question, "Well, what about that seven percent? Why aren't they enrolled?" Well, that seven percent of the students, they don't have a spot in their schedule because they may be behind in credits, they may have to retake a class over, they may have to take credit recovery, so they just don't have room in their schedule for one of those courses. If they did, they would be scheduled in one. Once again, we do those scheduling audits to make sure kids, every student, has an opportunity. And you can see, from 2015, fifty-three percent of our graduates graduated with an acceleration credit, either a college credit or an industry certification, and those numbers are about to come out, and we're anticipating that number's going to be seventy-seven percent. That would rank us number two in the state for high school acceleration. So, that's pretty impressive work over the past five and a half years. So, we have really rigorous graduation requirements. Now, I shared with you that we were tenth in the state the other day, and I'm going to share that slide with you in just a moment. But these are the things kids have to do to graduate. They've got to have twenty-four credits, they've got to attain the right credits, they have to have a 2.0 GPA, they have to pass the 10th-grade reading Florida assessment, and then they've got to pass an algebra end-of-course exam. Now, I can tell you, I just had to finish high school. There were no high-stakes testing, but this is a lot of pressure that our kids are under to make sure that they can pass these exams in order to graduate. So, we have a graduation dashboard, that this is Treasure Coast High School. Right now, they are the number-one school for graduation with almost 100%. If the superintendent says, "Dr. Prince, right now, if the year stopped, what percentage of our students would graduate from Treasure Coast High School?" Well, the number you see there is about ninety-one percent of our students have passed the reading and the math portion, they've already passed. But if I'm a principal, I need to provide those students that haven't passed with additional supports, so I can click on that, and you can't see that, but it's going to tell me the names of those kids, okay? The names of every student, exactly what those students need to graduate, so we can deploy our guidance counselors and our teachers to provide those students the supports they need to make sure they cross the finish line by May, so that they can walk across that stage. All right. This is an example of an algebra question. So, I'm going to give the board members two minutes to work this problem out. We'll provide scratch paper. I'm just kidding. But each of, each question, students have between two and three minutes to work the problem out in order to finish the exam. This is just one example of a regular multi-step question that students might see on the algebra end-of-course exam. And as you can see, it's, it's not easy, all right? But at Treasure Coast High School, only about seven percent of the students have not passed this exam. So, what we do is, we provide those students intensive, individualized support to make sure that they can pass it, and we also try to provide them as many opportunities as possible to make sure they pass that exam. By the way, if you need the correct answer, I can see you after the board meeting, and I do have it. But because of the work that we've done, we see that we get the results, and just looking from 2013 to 2020, I shared it with you at the last board meeting, that we've improved our graduation rate substantially, ranking 10th in the state. All of our Treasure Coast High Schools are the top in our area with regards to graduation rate. And most importantly, what we're seeing across the district with our students in all of our performance areas is we are closing, or have closed, the gap in performance between our black students, our white students, and our Hispanic students, which is just a great story and something to really tout, because we are truly an outlier when it comes to the performance of our students. So, principal, school staff, and parent surveys. I'm going to let the superintendent talk a little bit. The superintendent implemented this his first year, and I'm going to turn it over to him with regards to the quality department surveys.
Before I talk about that, Dr. Prince was talking about Treasure Coast High School, and right now, today, it would be at ninety-one percent. In years past, if we looked in February or January or at the winter break, it would be in the sixties or the seventies, and then you have to play catch-up. So, what happens is, because we have the graduation coaches, we have the graduation coaches, we have the counselors, we have teachers, we have this data that we're able to hone in on, you know, it's remarkable that right now, with four months left, you're at the ninety-one percent mark, and it starts in your freshman year, it doesn't start your senior year, and it's almost like every student has an advocate to make sure that they're taking the right coursework, and that's significant, and then we monitor that very closely. And we've got it down now, I mean, the principals, the school staffs have really, have really got this. We don't take it for granted, we still monitor it very, very closely. But it's, when you compare that to years past, or even, you know, we can, do you have it approximately where we are with the juniors right now?
It's in the seventies.
Okay, you know, and it's, and we still got a year, you know, they still have a year and a half to go, so those numbers are as high as they've been in the past as, as they've ever been as well. When we look at what Dr. Prince asked, here, I'm going to switch gears now. I know it came up in our work session with the school board about, you know, how do we, one of the things that we do, we do a lot of surveying, and what's on the screen there, I don't, and you have it in your, you have it in your handouts as well, is really, twice a year, at the winter break and at the end of the year, we'll ask our school centers on each department to give us, you know, to tell us how we're doing, and are we providing the services that we say we're providing. What was remarkable about this is, you'll see the number is about 4.54, and you can't see it on there, but you have the sheet with you, is that in probably the most challenging, toughest academic year ever, what's important to me is that that number has increased. We talked to the principals a couple of weeks ago, Simon Sinek, a leadership guru, made a comment that a crisis is the great revealer, and everything that's hidden is revealed, and you can see how, instantaneously, you see how people operate, you can see how people deal with stress. It reveals the quality of our culture, and it reveals the quality of our relationships. And because of the strong culture that we've got established right now, and it's all based on relationships, that came out loud and clear with the HBCU conversations that we had a little while ago, there's no substitute for those recruiters to be in front of the students, to see the students, to see their personality, and vice versa. We've been able to maintain that in the toughest year, and so this represents the first half of the year, the 4.54, which was an increase, because, as I shared with our principals, and it was Sinek and Maxwell talked about it as well, it's like, we want to have the ball. Our job is to provide service to our school centers, and it's our job to get the resources to the schools, and not to assume anything, but to get it out there. And so, this shows, from the principal's perspective and the school perspective, although we're not perfect, it's really good, it's darn good, and, and in fact, and in the toughest year, it's the highest that it's ever been, you know, that's what it's about, service to our school centers from the district, and I've commended our departments and I've asked them not to take that for granted at all, and then we'll do this again at the end of the school year and to see how that is. So, we continue to monitor ourselves in that area, and I didn't want, I really wanted to, I've already commended our teams, and they're in here right now, but it's nothing to take for granted, because there's, you know, the stress that they feel in the school centers and individual families, we've all felt it, and, and yet, we've still got to go to work, and we want to have the ball, and we want to, it's like the two-minute drill, and we want to make sure that we're going to score at the end, at the end. I could go into an analogy right now about Green Bay, but I won't with the football program or the NFL right now. Another survey that we have, I'm going to return it back over to Dr. Prince, really is a survey to students, where we talk to students about, it's about their, the SEL, social-emotional well-being, and how they're viewing their schools. Dr. Prince?
All right, so, all of our students also take a, a social-emotional survey, and this is just gauging how they feel about school. And we implemented this at the very beginning of last year, and we created a Department of Social-Emotional Health in our Safe Schools Department, and we can see that we're already starting to see some of the things that we're doing in our schools that impact social-emotional learning, having a positive impact. So, in the survey, there's five domains, basically student relationships, rigorous expectations, school climate, sense of belonging, and school safety. And actually, they have a favorability rating, but they also compare to other school districts nationally, so you can see how your students are responding to the survey, how they look nationally, or how your district compares nationally. And you can see, in a couple of areas, we are in the higher percentile, specifically teacher-student relationships, rigorous expectations, which I've talked about quite a bit today, and a sense of belonging. But in every single area, all of the domains, we've seen an improvement with regards to how students and how our kids feel about school. So, that's a remarkable accomplishment, particularly in this year of the COVID pandemic, where half of our students are, are virtual, not half anymore, but started out the year that way. So, you can see that our teachers and our staffs have done a remarkable job with regards to how kids feel about their school experience. So, I don't want to, to blow your mind here, but student assessments, we're going to start testing in April statewide, and our kids are assessed in grades three through 10 ELA. They start in grades three in math, and then high school geometry and algebra, grades five and eight science, seventh grade civics, grades nine through 12 algebra, nine through 12 geometry, high school biology, and high school US history. So, our students take all of these assessments, and every school site is assigned a school grade. But as a district, we use our unit assessment results, and this is extremely busy, I would expect nobody to know what this means except for me and these poor people in the room that have to meet with me every Wednesday. But we use all of this data based on the assessments, these many assessments our students are taking, to deploy our resources. We literally just met last Wednesday, we pulled some support from some areas, and we designated them into what I call high-needs areas, where teachers and students are going to get that immediate support, and those, literally, those meetings occur on Wednesdays, and we pivot immediately. We don't wait, we don't hesitate. If we see a challenge, we're going to go in there and we're going to try to get it fixed. But our district grade is, is based on eleven cells, and the last district grade we received, we earned 669 points, up from 573 in 2015, which was a 96-point improvement, and we were number one in the state for large districts for overall improvement over that, over that period of time. Now, working in schools, I know it's very difficult to move schools, but as a district, we've done an amazing job. These are the eleven cells, and I don't want to bore you to tears, but I'm going to tell all of you how districts are graded. So, there's eleven cells in the state accountability system. These four cells are proficiency cells, which means your students are reading and writing on grade level, they're doing math on grade level, they're doing science on grade level, and they're doing social studies on grade level. These two cells are called learning gains. That's the percentage of your students that are kind of making a year's growth in a year's time. If I started the year at a sixth-grade reading level, I walked out on a seventh-grade reading level. And then the state also wants to see how you're performing with your bottom students. The challenge that we have with learning gains in our bottom quartile is those students actually have to move more than a year, year's growth in a year's time. The state actually wants them to go a year and a half, because they'll never get caught up if they're only moving a year's growth in a year's time. We have our four-year graduation rate that we've kind of raved about, our high school acceleration that I've kind of talked about here today, and our middle school acceleration. High school acceleration is any kid that's graduated passing a college-level class, or they've passed a CTE exam. Middle school acceleration is any kid that has passed the algebra or geometry exam in middle school. So, we've got some really strong numbers, and how close are we to an A? Well, the last time districts were graded, we earned 669 points. We need 677 to be an A rating. We've never earned an A before, and we're just, we were just seven points away, just seven points away, less than one percent of the points necessary to be an A, very, very close. Dr. Mills, you, you look like you were going to ask me a question.
My question, I wanted to know what, what does it take, how many points for an A?
Yep, 677. See, we're good at anticipating. I always think, what would Dr. Mills say? So, we know what our two cells are going to be for this year's school grade, okay? We improved by a percent to 93% on our graduation rate, and our high school acceleration, we've increased by nine. So, we've got two cells that we're running far ahead than we were last year. The challenge that we're going to have this year, if school districts are graded, because we have no guarantee with regards to what the state is going to do this year, but we have the learning loss that our students had. That's the biggest thing we're struggling with, is because of all the time the kids missed the last nine weeks of last year and trying to recover from that. So, we've got our work set out for us. So, this is kind of the trends before I close up. The number of A and B schools, you can see, over the last seven years, we literally, in 2015, we had ten A and B schools, that number is now 24. So, we've had almost a double and a half the number of A and B schools that, that we had about five years ago. And this is the D and F schools, and, you know, we have 38 comprehensive schools. You know, in 2013, you know, more than one out of every four were either a D or an F. We now have no failing schools, and we are providing intensive support to the two, two schools that we do have that are Ds, and those supports kind of look like this. So, we've transferred highly effective teachers into those schools that need them most, and we have provided a monetary incentive to try to entice teachers to go. Our school renewal team, they're specifically working with those two high-priority schools. I can't commend Helen's team enough, talent development and curriculum, for creating our professional development to help our struggling teachers meet the needs of our kids, especially the struggling teachers that are teaching online, and making sure those teachers have what they need. Providing additional funding for tutoring, specifically at our red-tag schools, the superintendent likes to refer to them as red tag, because he always wants to know, when we have cabinet, what do our red-tag schools need? What do our red-tag schools need? And those are the schools that have the highest priority, that they don't have to go through any bureaucracy, the executive directors or school supervisors, they come directly to me, or Dr. Wild, or Mr. O'Leary, and we get things done for those schools. Additional grant funding, intensive progress monitoring, and lastly, you know, looking at schools that just a few years ago were either D or F schools, look at those schools now. Cast is a thriving fine arts magnet, Sam Gaines Academy and Fort Pierce Westwood Academy, we've raved about how those schools have dramatically improved their school grades, but not just that, but looking to rebrand those schools, that they're now destinations for students, and it's really created a lot of opportunities for our kids. And with that, I'll take any questions, or comments from the superintendent.
One thing I wanted to stress with the board, and again, some of you have seen this, I've seen some of it before, but I felt it was really important with our new board members coming on, that they kind of had a, a foundation, a basis of, you know, of where we are. When we look at the, the letter grade, and we look at what's going to be on the horizon, I think this is real important, that there's been a significant learning loss this year with students, whether it was from the last nine weeks of the year to the, to my school virtual, you know, everyday students were quarantined, teachers were quarantined, it's a, it's a major, major challenge this year. That goes without saying, probably the understatement of the year. It's our hope that, we're not opposed to any of the testing that will go on, because it should be used as a benchmark as to where we were two years ago and to where we are right now. It would be our hope that there would be no punitive damage taken from the state, because scores are going to go down statewide. When you've got so many students that are struggling in the state, we focus on those students, but we still have 30% of our, it's about 30% of our students that are at home still with my school virtual, and I've had conversations with some of the board members about the challenges that some of those students have, and we know we could better serve them if they were in the school center. But that's a choice that the parents have made, and we continue to work with them to try to convince them to come back in. So, we will see a decline in that. How significant, we don't know yet, but I anticipate- How significant, we don't know yet, but I anticipate that with, you know, with the exception, the graduation rate is a lagging indicator, so the graduation rate is based upon last year. So this graduation rate we'll see this year will still be in the ballpark there, and we'll be right in the ballpark with our acceleration classes. But when we break down those other cells statewide, you'll see a major, you'll see a significant decline, I think. Not that our teachers haven't been doing the best that they can or the support, it's just the nature of absenteeism, the number of days missed, and then just, you know, the challenges that are faced from these students. And so we're hopeful that the state will use this as baseline data, and then that gives us a benchmark for next year as to where we need to be. And we don't know what the fall will look like yet, and we don't know what next year will look like yet, and we won't know that probably for a few months. So even though we've got, as of two years ago, we were right there, and if we could have taken the graduation rate and the acceleration rate, we would have been an A-rated district. But those don't count until the following year. So I'm not so hung up on a letter grade, I've told our principals and our teachers, we just have to provide quality instruction, teaching the standards to our students. Dr. Wild's going to come up in just a second and talk about how we're going to, an attempt to try to catch these children up right now with some unique spring programs, and then we'll talk later on about what we're going to do in the summer as well. So it should be baseline, it should be a benchmark, and hopefully there'll be no punitive action taken against school, which is one of the flaws, I think, in the system anyway. And Dr. Prince talked about, we use all this data, so even if we see a decline in a certain grade level or a certain classroom, then we adjust the support that comes here, just like we've always done, except it's a significantly higher challenge this year than it's ever been for the reasons that I stated before. Before we switch over to Dr. Wild, are there any questions on Dr. Prince?
A lot of times you'll hear people say, oh, you're just promoting these kids. Well, these kids just don't get promoted, because you have to see, they have to go through state standards, so we just aren't promoting kids. And that's what you hear out in the community. And the other thing is, I've heard quite a few, quite a few times, is, oh, there was a time in our school district where we only had As and Bs in our school district, which was true, and I was on the board at that time, too. But the reality of it was, it was an election year, and Governor Bush, carte blanche, gave extra points. We still ranked at the bottom half, like, I think we're like 55, 60-ish. So when you hear that in the community and they say, but, that was years and years ago, and many governors ago, and the governor gave tons of points. This is a rubric that all districts know, and this is how we are all judged. So when you're out in the community and they say, oh, you're just giving points, no, our teachers earn those points, our students earn those points, our principals are working hard diligently monitoring these students, and our parents are heavily involved. And we obviously have a great staff here. So this is not a gift, this is earned. And I appreciate you, superintendent, and Dr. Prince, of what you guys do to monitor our students.
It's a federal graduation rate. So the rate that you're seeing right now, the 93% and the 98% in the six schools, is a federal, that is, you can compare an apple to other states as well, that's the federal graduation rate. And then Dr. Prince threw up the slide there as well as to what the students needed to graduate to get there. So nobody can be given anything. This past year, a couple of the items were waived because of the pandemic, but that had a minimal effect on us, because we do such a great job of monitoring those students. And then when you look in years past, and I always just focus on this year and where we want to be next year, you're still comparing the same, the districts are still, no matter what the scoring is, it's still the same for everyone. So we have different standards than we had back then, but the district, even with those standards, just because a school, and it's true right now, too, and this is an important point, just because a school is an A, doesn't mean there aren't struggling students within that school that need additional support. Or if the school is a C or below, there may be a higher percentage of students. But the standard itself is a statewide standard, so you compare apples to apples. So even though you may have had As and Bs, you still were in the, you know, in the bottom quartile when you compared yourself to the standard. I don't really focus on that too much anymore. I really focus on where we are right now and where we'll be, but it is a great point that you bring up. But it's important for the public to know that it's, you're comparing apples to apples when we do that, and when the graduation rate is a federal graduation rate across the country as well.
Two, I look at the numbers. If you look at the top quarter of the districts, predominantly, I think the first 15 are pretty well-to-do districts. There's St. John, Seminole County, Martin County, these are the wealthy, wealthy districts. And when we start working our way up to like number 15, and you start looking at that and seeing the advantages and disadvantages we have, it's pretty impressive.
We're number 10. Always want to push that. And, and the point is, with the higher free and reduced lunch, when we compare ourselves to districts that look like that, with, because, because, because the need, because the need, poverty is a barrier, but not an excuse, that students can't achieve at higher levels, which we've proven, that's, I started the presentation out that way. So when we compare ourselves, it is an outlier district in many things. And then the thing I think to be most proud of is we still have, we still have gaps, we have opportunity gaps more than ever this year because of the virtual versus the in-person learning. But as far as the graduation gap, there's not a graduation gap in San Luis County when you look at the numbers. And I showed you how we're really a very diverse district, but that when you look at that rate with our African-American and our Hispanic and our white students, they're all right there at 92, 93, 94%, which is very, very impressive. I mean, that's why we have to celebrate that success. And then it's like you won that game, but, you know, we're in the middle of a new year right now as well, focused on this year.
Dr. Prince, this is a very impressive presentation, and it shows how much work goes into student improvement. And as it's been said, you know, hinted toward, that many in the community don't really understand what has gone into this to bring the grade up. Mr. Gent mentioned the grade, like, the, it's not that important about the A being an A school or being a B school, but if you do the work, you will become an A school and a B school. So basically, the work that has gone into this has caused us to increase our grades. It's the work. It doesn't just happen, it's not just something that's been given. And there's another thing that some say out in the public, is that, not just that we're giving grades away, but that we're doing sneaky stuff to get the grade. And I think that some people just don't want you to do good, but I'm very appreciative with what the accomplishments that we have made as a school district. I have mentioned often before, when I came, what it was, you know, and it was not, well, the data shows what it was. And now we are where we are today. I know that you have done a tremendous work since coming here in the life of children through the increase of improvement, even emotionally and sociably, as you've shown here. Yeah, we got a ways to go, we always will have a ways to go, but we have come an incredible way. And I'm just really excited about what is being done right now within our school districts. And I thank you, I thank each and every one of you that have worked so diligently and so hard to bring us to this point, because we could still be at a 50 percentile or 60 percentile, but no, we're in the 90s now. And I just want you all to know how much I appreciate it, because I am very concerned about children and about their wellbeing, and I'm sure all of us here are. And I see the work being done. Thank you so much for your service.
Dr. Mills, I appreciate the comments. When I used to coach, I used to say, focus on the positive, the only place for a negative is in the dictionary. So when we hear the noise from the outside, it doesn't bother me, because when, we're an open book, we're very transparent, and you nailed it, it is hard work, this is not easy. And what our teachers accomplish, what our, you know, it's, every job in the district is important, no matter what level. And so it's very, very difficult, this year being as difficult. And, you know, you teach, you try to teach those standards, and the letter grade is what it is this year. I'm not concerned about it, because I'm more concerned about a benchmark to see how much we've lost, and then, and Dr. Wild will segue in a minute, we're not waiting till the summer, but some students have lost more than a year, some students have maybe lost two years. It's going to take a couple of years to recover from that, and I think people need to know that nationally and locally, statewide, and at the national level. And we don't really know, the testing that we do now will give us a good benchmark. Our unit assessments and the things we do tell us, tell a story as well, I mean, kind of as a predictor as to where we'll be. Then we get those, we get those scores, again, not, the testing part is going to be fine, not opposed to that at all, just don't want punitive action taken in a year. And I'm, you know, I don't want to say I'm confident, but I'm hopeful that that will occur, but I do appreciate the comments. It is, it is hard work. And is it any harder this year than it's ever been? Absolutely. The culture that's been established in the district over the years about the relationship piece, the leadership training that you all have been involved in, and that our principals have been involved in, and our administrators, all of that, the SEL, and what we're doing on the total child, all of those, you know, it's the big pie that comes together, they all have a piece in that for this success. And you can't ever, I always say, only take for granted those things that you want to go wrong. So it is a significant event in the most difficult times.
Part of this, when you guys went like this, but I can celebrate it, too, as I did at the last meeting, 98.2, Troy. So take my questions on face value, I don't need, they're not negative, they're just basic questions. You go back to page nine, you've got the middle school algebra course enrollment.
Yep.
And I don't want to belabor this, but that's in middle school. What about algebra in K through eight, middle school age groups? Do we offer the same course there, or are we going to? Or, do you understand what I'm saying? Is this just, just for middle schools? Because we only have four middle schools, right? Am I correct?
No, oh, yes, good, that's a, that's a good question. So I understand the question, it took me a second to process it, but yes, we have kittle, kittle, thinking of Skittles, I'm thinking about a snack. The answer to your question is yes, we offer, and that's the slide you're referring to, we offer algebra and geometry to all middle school-age students, whether they are at a middle school or a K-8. So all students have opportunities to take those courses that are in sixth, seventh, and eighth grade.
Do we single out the middle school algebra course enrollment here?
It could, it's just semantics, it could be middle and K-8.
I thought that's what it might be.
Yes, sir.
I just, I don't know about the rest of the board, but I like the grammar school, middle school separation, high school, we have a lot of K through eights and limited, but I know it's really economically not feasible, probably. I don't know how the board feels, but I like the kids being separated with the middle school. I think it's, affords a, you don't, you don't have the six-year-old kids with the 13-year-old kids, you know? Skipping that one to the next one, you know, the surveys that we're talking about on page 15, principal, school staff, and parent surveys, can you give me the audience, how many people? What was the parental surveys, how many people did we speak to? Is it, is the survey done between the school staff and the parent surveys, is the parents 70% in the survey, or can you give me some insight into that?
Yep. So on average, and this is a national average, and I've got our assessment person tell me if I'm misspeaking at all, but on average, if you get 10% participation, you're doing good for parents, okay? I'm talking 10% of our parents. So we're at about 9 or 10% right at the average. It's very difficult, because a lot of our parents just don't want to complete the survey, but we offer it online to our families, and we've had about a 10% response rate with our principals. Our principals complete this survey, and we have over 90% of our principals that do take the survey. Teachers and staff take a survey about their school leadership, we have over 90% participation of our teachers. And then students, every student grades three through 10? Yes, correct, okay. Grades three through 10, all of our students take the survey. So they have a window of about three weeks that they're asked, it takes about 25 to 30 minutes for the kids to go on computer and take the survey?
Also, kids, students took, that's not in here. But you can, I can stop you here, this survey was offered to every parent?
The survey, yes, it was offered, only about 10% take it.
Okay, that answers my question. And the last thing I want to ask is that SATs this year, I've heard three different things. There's going to be SATs in Florida, SATs are going to be the same, there's not going to be any SATs, or SATs are going to be modified. I heard it, I read it on the internet, Mr. Gent, so it's got to be true, right?
Depends on the website.
What's the story, Mr. Gent?
I'm going to ask Dr. Wild, because she handles SAT. I'll ask her.
There you go.
Good morning. Both of those things are true. Yes, there is going to be SAT test administration this year, however, the College Board has dropped the subject-area SAT tests. That was one specific kind of test that only certain students took anyway, they have dropped that.
Okay. Are you on the internet?
Along the same lines. Did they modify Bright Futures, too, in the volunteer service hours? Go ahead, I mean, it's the same thing.
Yes, they did make accommodations for that last year, and I am expecting that to continue.
Thank you, that's all I have, thank you.
Go back to the slide, because that's where I wanted to go with Troy's, with Troy's, Mr. Ingersoll's question, the slide with the tri-county high schools.
Give me one second, I'll do this faster if I just do this.
There it is.
That's the survey, sir, give me, I think.
So when I was talking about apples to apples, that's what, that's your comparison, so that's your, and all the districts have, you know, they've all done a nice job. I'm just showing you where we compare within the tri-county area with our rates in our traditional high schools. That is on page... I was hoping with the Cracker Jack staff would be able to help me with that.
Page 28.
Did you find it?
Page 14.
14, I'm sorry, it's, the slide says, you have two slides per page. I'm sorry. You have two slides per page. Yeah.
Anyway, just wanted to share that. Are there any other questions for Dr. Prince before we slide on over? Okay, Dr. Wild?
All right, let me just get to your slide, Dr. Wild.
Not to beat a dead horse, but Dr. Wild, you know, is going to be talking a little bit about some of the unique programs that we're going to be undertaking here to try to bridge that gap and to help our students catch up.
All right, good morning, Madam Chair, board members, I'm very happy to be here. This is a great jumping off point, because we've just heard about all the work that's been done, and so everything we're talking about today just builds on everything that Dr. Prince just shared. So in the December board meeting, I came up and talked to you about Executive Order 07, 2020 07, and that is about the new innovative learning plan. And there was a question as to whether we were going to be permitted to continue My School and under what conditions. And so we were pleased when this executive order came out, and it required us to submit a plan for how we would progress in the spring if we were going to continue My School online. And so I'm happy to say that our plan was approved. It was submitted on December 18th, and it was approved officially yesterday, oh, well, no, it was approved on December 18th. Yesterday, a new aspect of our plan was approved, which I'll get into in just a moment. Schools must still do traditional school for all students, five days a week. Full services are still required in both the traditional school and the My School online option for districts that continue that innovative learning model. Ours is called My School online. Progress monitoring is going to be conducted in the spring by the Department of Education, so in addition to all of the progress monitoring we do, DOE is going to be monitoring students as well. It required enhanced tru-. It required enhanced truancy methods, specific professional development for virtual instruction, which we have a vast amount of that happening already. And we were very fortunate because for the remainder of this year, we're going to continue to get full funding for our innovative learning model, My School. So one of the key components of this new spring plan was that we were required to notify any parent of any student who was struggling academically in virtual that they must return to traditional school. Now with that said, there is a parent choice option and parents can put it in writing that despite this notification, they want to remain in My School online. So there was a very short turnaround time in this. And I want to point out that this came after our parents had already indicated their intent to return. We had already given people that choice. People had made it, schedules were in place for them. This came out and with a very short turnaround time, we targeted those students, notified their parents, and the schools did an amazing job responding to that and putting their schedules into place. And to date, we have over 1,600 additional students that returned due to this notification. So that is good news. In the plan, in the plan that we did to get those notifications out, we did let the schools know what criteria to use to identify those targeted students. And we looked at grades, their test scores, which is our indicator of how a student is doing, and their attendance. And then each parent was notified of that. And a new requirement is that any student that returns because they were targeted, we are required to provide appropriate interventions, which in St. Lucie Public Schools, we are doing anyway, but we have to really show that we're doing it for these particular students. And these are the students that are going to be monitored by DOE on a new program called Bright Byte, which you might hear about. Some of the strategies that we put in the plan is that our strategies will be individualized for our students. We're implementing an after-school reading program that I'll share with you in detail in just a minute. We are utilizing our Title I funds at the school sites for additional tutoring, including tutoring those My School students that can be individualized, one-on-one if necessary. Instruction is continuing when a teacher is quarantined. That might look a little different in different districts. If students are still in school, teachers are still instructing them. We are doing specialized tutoring for our students that speak other languages. And I'll give you some detail about that in just a minute. We are going to be expanding our summer school plans. And as Mr. Jen mentioned, we'll come back later and share that. We're coming up with some new exciting, very expanded summer school plans. And we took advantage of a data support grant to add another individual to help us monitor all this data. And this person is going to be working with St. Lucie Public Schools and Martin County Public Schools. We never turn down an opportunity for additional funds to target our students and to help our schools. Title III is a department within the Office of Teaching and Learning that works with our ESOL students, our students that speak other languages. And we have designed a tutoring just for those students that has started and it will continue for the remainder of the year. It's for students in grades two through 12. And it is a one-to-one or a one-to-five student-to-teacher ratio, depending on the subject area. And it is taught by bilingual teachers. So that is additional support they get for reading, writing, and math. And it is a personalized schedule. We contact each family individually and work around their time constraints to get that tutoring taken care of. Now, we are doing a new after-school reading program. And this is funded through one of the Gears funding sources. And it is specifically to bridge any learning gaps that were widened during this COVID-19 period. And we are implementing it at all elementary schools and our K eight schools with elementary grades. This will begin officially on February 1st and end on April 1st. And we are targeting 1,122 students for that. I apologize for that phone. That was my phone. For this Gears program, there are requirements that came from DOE. And so I just want to quickly review those. It does require a minimum of 80 hours of additional instructional time, face to face. That is a lot of additional hours between February 1st and the end of April. Transportation must be provided. Progress monitoring is a component of it. And meals are provided to the students. So they will be receiving supper if they stay for this program. So there's a lot of people involved in making that all happen and everyone's working so hard. The program itself is a reading instruction program and it must focus on the components of reading that you see listed there. How are the students targeted? This is outlined by DOE and we must target those students that were disconnected or hard to reach during distance learning. That happened in 1920. So that was the spring distance learning. And we are required to target students who were in grades K through three last year and have substantial reading deficiencies. So those are our students currently in grade one through grade four. And also at our lowest 300 schools, we have five of those schools. Our students in grade four and five last year, so that would include our current fifth graders at those schools are targeted. Now, we have some schools who are expanding that with their Title I funds to include students in fifth grade, even if they're not a low 300 school. The program design, it's a six-to-one student ratio, although it may be lower. So we have told schools that if they have special needs students or My School students that are going to come in for this, that they can go lower than that. But six-to-one is the typical student-to-teacher ratio. They must meet the 80-hour requirement. And for most schools, it is going to be after school for two hours and 15 minutes, Monday through Friday. Requires an evidence-based reading program and the new book list must be utilized from DOE. That is correct, yes. We have, we did allow for some creativity. We do have a couple of schools that are going to do Monday through Thursday and the remaining hours on Saturday. But overwhelmingly, they're all doing Monday through Friday. Yes. The teachers, Mr. Jen always emphasizes put the right teacher in front of those most struggling students. They must be effective, have evidence that they are effective at teaching writing. They must be certified in elementary ed or have a reading endorsement, positive relationships with students. And we know that two hours and 15 minutes is a lot after school. So we are also having some teachers that are sharing a position. So one teacher might be doing half of the week and another teacher might be doing the other half. So that was a very brief overview of our spring plan and our new after-school reading tutorial program, Gears. Any questions?
Participate after school if the parents so see fit that that's necessary.
Yes, ma'am. We did encourage the schools to reach out to their My School students who meet this criteria and come in with the knowledge that they would be in a very, very small group, likely one to three if they are My School students. So we have encouraged that. If they are not interested in that, we're also utilizing Title I funds to do individual virtual tutoring. But if we can get them in face to face, if we have determined that the virtual method is part of why they are falling behind, we want to get them in face to face for the tutoring.
Okay, so you did say that they can do it virtually as well?
Not through this program. We're supplementing this program with Title I funds for virtual tutoring.
And so the student would be in school every day for two and a half hours after school?
Yes.
Monday through Friday?
Monday through Friday. Whether you are coming to brick and mortar currently for your school day or you're doing My School online, if you meet the criteria for this program, you'll be invited to come in for two hours and 15 minutes after school.
Thank you.
You're welcome. Sure, Mrs. Richards. Homework? Two hours and 15 minutes, yes. That is an excellent question. The teachers will be notified of which students are participating in this. And with two hours and 15 minutes, they could actually take a look at their reading homework during that time and get support for that homework. But any other homework, we would ask the teachers to recognize that the students are doing that. And we're already working on giving homework that is necessary, not giving homework just for the sake of homework. So that is all part of work we do with our teachers about making sure that anything they get to do at home is valuable work, not busy work. But the teachers will be notified of that because it's a long school day. You're absolutely right. You're welcome. Correct. February 1st through the end of April. Thank you.
I know we've had you here a little bit longer than we normally do, but I felt this was important. I just want to close out. I wanted to give you a brief update on our, with our referendum. We have, with our new board members now, we have our new, we have our committee. On the screen, is there a, is there a, is there a laser on here? That's okay. If you go to the webpage, I'm going to go back. I'm live, right? Okay, so that's our homepage. And then on the webpage, when you scroll down, and this has always been there because this is real important. So you'll find a referendum and you'll click on referendum update. Okay? And then what we have here is, you've seen this before, and then these are, this is our committee makeup that we have. And then we talk about. List on there will be, we have the four, you know, we have the areas, the teacher salaries, the mental health, the school security, the fine arts. And so we have some information here that was negotiated with the union and the board approved that. I'm not going to get into the weeds on it right now. But what I wanted to do is go down and show you that we've got our new pie chart. This chart here is from last year, 1920. Okay? And so when we look at last year that ended June 30th, you can click on and you can see where everything is. Particularly, we showed this to you last year when we clicked on where we, how we were spending the dollars for the individual school centers, for the arts and those things. I can click on Alapata Flats. It'll break out exactly how much they had, how much they spent. So that's available from last year. When we go into this year, then we look at our recruitment, we look at the dollars that are available, we look at how the dollars were negotiated to go out. We come over to school security where we have the officers on every page. We come over here to the mental health piece. And this is what has changed a little bit. It's going to fund six additional social workers, bringing the district to 24, behavior specialists, 10 behavior techs. We have, these are hard positions to fill. And then the certified counselors. And then we come here and this was really, we were using the dollars for the arts and the fine arts. And these dollars have been distributed to the schools just before the winter break. And again, I'll just go here on Treasure Coast High School. When it says they haven't spent any money yet, those are coming in, those are coming in every day. But so this is updated every quarter. So at the end of the quarter, this will be updated. So you'll be able to see what they spent it on, similar to how we did it, bless you, to how we spent it last year as well. So you'll be able to break that down. And you can see here for Alapata Flat, they had stage lighting and microphones. For St. Lucie High School, buy uniforms, musical instruments, laptop card. So all, every dime, literally every dime that's spent, it's really, you can see where the dollars go. So we'll be meeting with your representatives on, and I think it's in about two weeks. We had to postpone the meeting because several of them were out of town. So we'll be meeting within, I think, the first two weeks of February. And we'll go through this information with them. That's your committee that's appointed. This is also on the webpage. That is, it's there for anybody in the community to see as well and to contact us. Trying to be as transparent as possible. And I just wanted to take a second because I've mentioned it before to the board at the board meeting. And I just, you can go through that at your leisure. And then if you have any specific questions, you know, just let me know and I'll be able to help you out, or Michelle and our chief financial officer as well. Okay? That completes, unless there's a question? Yes?
First one for me, but I don't know how it works. But we did visit eight or nine schools, 10 schools maybe last week for Teacher of the Year type things. And we had a graduation. And every time I visit or speak to a teacher, just how's it going, you know? And I think I mentioned this before, I don't know how the others, this is a workshop, so I'd just like to know. Speaking to them, things are going, as I've said, pretty smooth, smoother than I thought when I came on the board with the COVID and everything that we're doing. It's remarkable. These are, everybody knows, many a times, not normal times. But the kids have been really well, all age groups from the teachers that I speak to. Other than, of course, the natural problems with virtual and some of that. Mr. Jen, all I hear is that the only problem there seems to be in the schools is there's a, as far as social distancing and the kids behaving, wearing masks and everything and how things are run, is the PE classes. The PE classes seem to be large. Too many kids, sometimes 30, 40 kids in a PE class. And I just know if anybody else has got to complain or heard anything about it or how are we handling it or is it, we have a complaint or am I just? And I haven't heard it from everybody, but I've heard it from maybe six or seven different schools.
Yeah, the PE classes are larger by nature. Some of the electives are as well.
Of course, of course.
So you do the, and with more students coming back in, you try to adhere to as many of the guidelines as you can. And we, we've got a good track record of monitoring the students that are there. That's why we haven't seen the spikes in the school centers themselves. The information you get, the daily update as well. But when you have higher numbers, then they have to use unique, you know, Bridget Hardigain works with that. She works with our, all of the departments because we have some challenges in fine arts and those kinds of things as well. So you do the best you can and follow, try to follow the guidelines as closely as you can. Our principals, you know, they're very strategic in that. This is a difficult year. This is a very, very difficult year. And not going to make any bones about it, our teachers are to be commended for what they're doing and our staff members. You get the numbers every day as well. And the only reason those numbers are as low as they are is because of the precautions that we're taking in the school centers and, you know, with the principals monitoring those things. So there's going to be some outliers there because PE classes are definitely larger and hope, you know, I see a lot of the kids that are outside, you know, and are playing, which is where you want them to be. And then, you know, to make sure that we're working with the instructors themselves on strategies. And if they have unique things, they need to present that to the principal. Then we come in and offer additional support if we can or ideas on trying to keep the students separated.
Yeah, I just mentioned it, I'm sure you're aware of it, and then I'm sure I just.
Absolutely.
The other board members, if you've heard. But the reason, the connotation, you know, during football season, we had outbreaks with the football teams because they're together, they're, you know?
Well, what was unique about that is that you would have one or two, and yet it didn't spread to the other players, but you have to do the quarantine. We have four high school basketball teams right now quarantined because of a coach or because of one or two players. Again, it mostly is happening in the community. Bridget puts in that, puts in there at the bottom of the information you get each day, you know, how many of the, or how many are outside of the school center. So you see the majority of these things. You saw the spike after the break when the students weren't even in here. You're seeing a little spike now because we were out of school last Monday. And so all we can do is continue to stress when you're not in school center, this is what the behaviors we need to do. There's places in the community now where kids are congregating and playing in gyms and playing on playgrounds or particularly, I'm concerned about the gymnasiums. And we monitor it very, very closely and mitigate that the best that we can in the school centers. So I think it's, I think what we're doing, I know it's working based upon the data because we haven't seen large-scale outbreaks. What creates the challenge are the quarantines. We had two siblings in a classroom, you know, that were quarantined because they're siblings and they're at home together. And so those phone calls may go out twice to the same people and make it seem like, oh, my goodness, you know, we've got a big, we got a big event when it was really just, you know, two kids, but we're in that same classroom. So a lot of the folks get the same calls. We're working very closely. I can't commend our health department enough for what we're doing with them and with Bill Tomlinson and Bridget, working with our staff members and with our students and what we're doing. So I think it's a very positive story. Perfect? Nope, it's not perfect, but I think it's, the data speaks for itself on it.
Yeah, but the good news is the kids are really doing well. I give, teachers have given. I give, teachers have given them an A-plus. The kids are wearing masks, they're doing what they're told socially, this, and that's, that's huge. I'm just glad to hear that. I don't know if anybody's heard different, but I hear good things.
No, Mr. Kelly, I heard the same thing, you know, hanging around a bunch of coaches and coaching myself, you know. Predominantly, PE classes are going to get more, you, you can't come in the middle of the year and stick a kid back in a band class, you know? You just, you start those at the beginning of the year, particularly in middle school. So, you know, PE classes are just the natural selection where, you know, and like superintendent says, they're outside and they can social distance easier than they can like in, in other resource areas. So, I mean, that, that's just, that's just part of the pandemic. But going back, I, I think the only negative that I've heard throughout this whole quarantine business, and predominantly it's my negative too, is I got quarantined, but I never got sick. And, and that's, that's, I think that's the thing is like, oh, no, I got quarantined again because I've been involved. And it's not because of the school districts, it's because of what the health department's guidelines and, and regulations are. So, I mean, if anything, it's like, oh, I, I'm, a, a parent may have a kid that gets quarantined again. Well, he just got off quarantine. Well, don't let him hang around, kids, you know? Make him all wear masks, social distance. And that, that's what, that's the thing that we have to keep on reinforcing is, yeah, there's vaccines coming out, yeah, there's not a stress on COVID, but yes, you still have to maintain your social distance. You still have to keep your mask on because if you do, you don't get quarantined. And that's what I'm, I'm hearing a lot is, you know, I've got to leave, got to stay home with my kid. Well, tell your kid to, you know, social distance. That sounds brutally cold. Try to social distance. With a smile.
Same thing. And speaking of quarantine, can I just ask again, and I know everybody's concerned, how are we doing with getting our teachers vaccinated? Have you heard anything from the state? I know over 65, over 65 is one thing, but we want them all vaccinated.
Yeah, right now, it's, we've been able to work very closely and get our 65 and older in, and it's been able to, we've been able to expand that to most employees, 65 plus. The next phase is really going to be dependent upon the governor as, you know, you see the same things that I, that I see in the, in the news each, each day. But we have been able to work with our 65-plus employees and very grateful to the health department for, for helping us with that. The next, the next wave, we're just waiting to see. You know, we've been told when more doses become available that teachers will be, will be high up on the, on the pecking order there. We continue to push that. We continue to, to lobby for that. So that'll be a wait-and-see thing, but we, we were able to take, take care of 65-plus.
Mr. Jen, since Mr. Kelly has mentioned about the gym and that time with the students, can we just make sure we double check, then ensure that while they're in gym, that the students are staying as safe as possible?
We do that every day. We do that every day, and that's why I'm saying the data shows that when you see the spikes and you see, or not even spikes, but you see how it's spread out from the elementary to the high schools, where we've seen some now are in sports, after school, you know, the, the basketball, you know, which is a contact sport, just like you see in the college, collegiate level into pro level. And so, just like we saw in football, we had to quarantine, I think, three teams, but there was never an outbreak. It was from one individual, and a couple of times, they weren't even players. They were people close to the program.
So the students that are in gym, in school, we're not talking about the after-school kids that might be playing sports. We, we have, we don't have any cases, or we have very low cases that have developed as a result of gym?
The data, the data is, the data that we have, I can't tell you exactly where it comes from. If we know there's an, you know, we, we monitor it by classrooms. I'm not aware of any outbreaks.
Can we get that data?
Yeah, we have it. I mean, we give it to you every day. I don't break it down by classrooms because that would be almost impossible, but we do break it down by the students. We do have that information.
So you don't have
So answer their question, no, I haven't seen any, any spikes in PE. And I'll double check that.
That's the question.
Yeah, yeah, so we'll double check that, but that's not. What we see is it comes in from the outside. Our schools have done a remarkable job of the mask-wearing and the, the, the social distancing. It's, it's, it's a tough, tough task, and the students have been great and with that. And if, you know, when students come in and say, I'm not going to do that, then they have a choice to stay home and do the my school. Not going to play, don't make an apology for that.
Can you check that data for us and make sure we
Sure, absolutely. Be happy to.
Any other questions or comments?
I have one question. I mean, we are, we are wanting the students to come back to school. So what positions are we putting in place for social distancing in the classroom? Because if you're here, you're on social distance, and that's perfectly, but if a classroom gets smaller, and you have 18 coming children per in the classroom with a teacher, how are we going to, to make that work, keeping in mind social distancing? I mean, where the classroom is like for social distancing?
What you do is you monitor that. You try to support the classes. It's almost impossible in certain classes, just like it's impossible on a school bus to do that. So we have our seating charts. We try to keep the students as separate, as far away physically as we can. We're able to then, if, if there is somebody positive from, that comes from the health department, we're able to look at that. So you work with that individual school, you work with those principals, and you work with those classrooms. Is it, is it a perfect six-foot from everybody? Nope, it's not. And with more students coming back in, it's not. But what you're finding is you're not seeing any data to show that the outbreaks are starting in the school centers and that they're spreading. They're very small in nature, which is because we have to monitor that every day and to be on top of that every day and, and really do the best we can with that within the guidelines. And, and so that's for, you know, that's, that's on our principals' minds every day. We work closely with our union partners as well, you know, so when we can hear from teachers and go in and say, well, here's a suggestion, or there's a suggestion. But the fact that there's not outbreak shows that what we're doing is working.
Because we have
No, even with the larger classrooms.
Do we have a curriculum or quick curriculum right now?
I don't know the exact size. I know that there are some classes that could have probably 20 students in there, and it's been like that since the beginning of the year, based upon the scheduling of that. You try to mitigate that as the best you can, but it wouldn't be a new, there'll be more, there's more students on campus now than there were. But there's been, since the break, there's been no spike with school cases or outbreaks that are occurring because of things that are happening in school center. And hopefully, that will continue. And that's a trend not only here, but across the state and nationally.
So late, I'm sorry, go ahead, Mr. Jen. So lately, it, it looks like there's been a longer list of people that have contacted the COVID in the school district. What do you attribute that to? Is that a state?
I attribute it to that it's, that it's, it's, we're not seeing that that infection has occurred on the school campus, okay? And then when we do, when we find it, we're seeing that our, our practices of doing the, the, the contact tracing and then they get the quarantining is working because you'll see, you know, across the country, you're seeing more and more bumps. So you would see that as well with our, our school-aged students. But you're not seeing it really, when you look at it, you'll see how widespread it is across
I see that.
Several schools that are there. And if we find one, if we find one where there's a higher number within the school center, nine times out of 10, it's because of athletics. It's, it's, it's in the sporting, it's in the sport area where a player or a coach or a cheerleader or somebody has, has tested positive, and then the contract, then our, you know, we do the, we do the contact tracing, then we do the, the quarantining, which is very disruptive to the school center itself, but it's the safe way to do that. And that's why the, as I mentioned before, I think we're doing a, a, a really good job with that. Exactly, it's spread out. And then if you see a spike in certain schools, then we try to go in and say, okay, what's going on with that? Is it, was it something here? You know, the majority of them, almost, the vast, vast majority are coming in from the outside. And it, there's a, there's a dashboard on the webpage as well that's, that's updated every day so that parents and folks that haven't, need to see it, can look at that as well. And it's been working very well for the school district.
Mr. Jen, I, I think
Reason for the uptick, just listening to the news, I know that's a bad thing to do, is we're just coming off a holiday season, and you're about two weeks out, and that's how the virus spreads is, is, is when, when families are together, having sleepover parties and stuff like that. So it's going to go down for like the next three or four weeks, I mean, month and a half, and they say spring break will be the next, next trigger point. And then it'll be two and a half weeks after that where you'll see another uptick. So, I mean, we were doing well until, you know, what was it, Halloween? And on Halloween, that one weekend sent us an uptick like dramatically. Then we were good, and then it was like Thanksgiving and Christmas sort of killed us. And then now we're, we're going back to a lower rate, so.
I'm sure we could have this workshop go all day if we kept bringing it up, but it's a good point, I think. I spoke to Mr. Jen about this briefly in another context, but when it gets to a point where we, we bring back 90% of the kids, you're right on, right on point. We're going to have to use other public buildings probably, and I think we discussed that in another context, Mr. Jen, but that's probably what we're going to have to do. It's going to be an enormous amount of money, and it's, you're going to have to, it's, it's just going to be a, a big problem. But a year from now, this isn't going away. We're still going to be talking about this one year from right now.
And one of the other things that have occurred too, we've had virtual classes that have, virtual teachers that have come back now as the students have come back in. So that's helped us mitigate and keep those numbers smaller. So what you see, and I monitor across, you know, you have some districts with 80 to 90% of the kids that are back in their school centers. And in different school center, we watch, you know, and you'll, you know, you watch to see if there's a, a pattern there. You know, and all we can continue to do is beat it to death, you know, what we're doing, what we're doing here, we're wearing the mask, we're doing the social distancing. You do the best you can with that, with the students. And you walk a very fine line because you have some students that have to be there. Most of them need to be there. And you have to weigh the, the health effect based upon, you know, what's, what's happened here since August is working for our school district and working in the state of Florida. And you've got those children that we've, that there's no substitute for being in front of that teacher. So you walk that, that tightrope there of making sure that we're doing everything we can to keep the children safe, but those kids have to be in there. They're going to fall for the, or you're going to see a, you're going to see, you won't see it this year, you'll see, you'll see parts of it, but you'll see students that have already been behind, that grow further and further behind, and then, and then we're going to be playing that catch-up game as well. So you try to monitor all of that. Again, the safety piece, there's no, there's, our team is remarkable. Terrence's group is out there doing the deep cleaning every, every night, and, and we've got to find a well-oiled machine. Well, as you say, I can't predict whether it's going to bump or not. I anticipate it will bump. We'll continue to do the things that we're doing that have shown that they work, the more teachers that come back as well, that's helped us mitigate small classrooms. So, you know, we continue to monitor that closely. And if we hear anything, we work closely with Mr. Freeland and the union and working with his teachers. You know, that safety piece, it's, it's, it's paramount. It's just a different day and time, but I can assure our parents it's working, and I can assure the board that it's working, and our staff should be commended for that.
I mean, obviously, we are working towards that goal, but in anticipation, because the, the, the goal is to have the kids back in school face-to-face. So in anticipation of that, how are we, in my mind, I'm sure we have a solution, but in my mind's eye, how are we going to do the social distancing? Like I said, wearing the mask is a given, but how are we going to do that, protect our kids, protect our, and protect our teachers? Because I see the kids come off the school bus, and I'm thinking, you know, wow, you know, what are they bringing home to me, or what are they bringing home? You know, so those are, that as a parent, that is my concern. And I hear you say that it comes from the outside, but it's the outside that's coming in, you know? So, I mean, it's like a catch-22 here, you know, you, you know? And yes, we're doing the best that we can, but I just wanted to go on record to say that I am concerned when the kids come back to school full force, you know, that we have, and I'm sure we will have a plan, you know, in place, you know, for, for social distancing, because I, I'm an advocate for social distancing.
Yeah, yeah, it's, the data shows that it's what's coming in, you know, I, it's, like you said, a catch-22, but the data shows that the majority of this, the overwhelming comes in from the community. We've got the students six, seven hours a day, and it's probably the safest place that they're at. I would bet that 95 to 98% the safest place is in the school center as opposed to out to be unsupervised or out, out not practicing what we enforce in schools. We can enforce it in school, I can't enforce it outside of the school. So it represents a major, major challenge for us, one that, like, again, the data shows that we're doing a great job with that. And, and we have, you know, strategies in place to jump right in if we need to, if we see spikes here or there.
We're very blessed with this county. Many adequate public buildings, like the community center, civic center, the fence center, there's many places that we could use. I've been through it, through the hurricanes where we had to utilize buildings, and right now, they sure not, they're not using them for parties and, and all kinds of festivities. So they're, they're underused right now, and if we needed them, I'm sure that the local governments are going to work with us if we, that's, if it, if it gets to that point, that's what we have to do. I, I don't, maybe staff has a different idea, but I, I can't fit them in my house, my garage either, so. We have a lot of public buildings, that's all I'm saying. But you make, you make, that's an elephant that's been in a room here, so thanks for bringing it up, yeah.
Thank you.
Mr. Jen, our thanks for putting together a really good workshop. You and your team astounded us every day with the magnitude of the work that you all do for our students and our staff, and we are profoundly thankful for that. And seeing no other business to come before us, we are adjourned.